Coming up on the live and interactive AXA Legislative Lunch Break, Yvonne and I will get you all of your latest news and information from the state Capitol in CDE with an in-depth analysis on how it impacts your school community. Plus, we are joined today by Senator Josh Newman from District 29. We'll talk about transparency during board meetings, the legislative process, and what he sees in public education moving forward.
The AXA Legislative Lunch Break starts now.
And it is just after 1 o'clock. We welcome you on a Wednesday to the AXA Legislative Lunch Break along with Yvonne Carrillo, AXA's Senior Director of Policy and Governmental Relations. I'm Naj Alkon, AXA's Senior Director of Marketing and Communications. Welcome. We are honored to have you with us today on the show. Go ahead and jump onto the chat. Say hello and let us know where you're watching from. Yvonne, how are you today?
I'm doing great. How was my opening? Am I off to a good start?
I think that you had the appropriate amount of energy right off the top there. Certainly raised the bar from what Edgar usually gets to us. So, so good, good job there. And we should make note Edgar is not with us today, Yvonne, because Edgar is touring parts of the world to take in the World Cup. This is something he's been excited about for a very long time. And I know he promised, when we were meeting last week, he promised not to respond to emails or texts or phone calls unless it was an emergency. And I have to ask, have you reached out to Edgar since he's been on vacation?
No, I have not reached out to him. I've not heard from him, but I've definitely seen photos that he's been posting on Instagram and on Facebook. Right? So he's, he's rubbing it in and he's, he's obviously enjoying himself. And I'm really happy for him that he's able to, to have this experience with his kids.
Yeah, it's, it's a great experience for him. Helio Brazil, Mark Campbell with us today to start off the show. Dana Lynch with us as well. Coming up, we will have Josh Newman, Senator from California's District 29, which represents portions of Los Angeles, Orange, and San Bernardino Counties. He'll be on in a couple of moments. Talk a little bit about the bill that he is pushing in the state Capitol that strengthens transparency in our school districts. Also talking about what is happening with the budget process now that we're past the budget. What are some of the goals coming up? We'll talk with him in just a couple of moments. I do want to hit a couple of news headlines, Yvonne. And we've had a lot of news related to what's happening involving politics in our school communities. We'll start in Chino Valley, which is the latest news headline to come out. The board in Chino Valley's Unified School District approved a policy during a very contentious meeting that required, that requires staff to notify parents in writing within three days after a student requests to identify with a gender different than what is on their birth certificate. Now, there were speakers who landed on both sides of the issue, including State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman. Thurman came to speak during the public event. Again, the proposed board policy against that. And according to the board president at the time, he had run out of time. You can see video of this meeting from our, from what's happening in the school board meeting itself. As we mentioned, Tony Thurman was there to speak out against that proposed board policy. And according to the board president at the time, he'd run out of time. After returning to the podium to respond to comments from the president, he was escorted out by law enforcement. You can see it right there. Here's what Thurman had to say at the board meeting.
In addition to being the state superintendent, I am also a parent. And I come before you as a parent tonight. And we can debate all of the laws and all of the policies and practices. I ask you to consider this, that nearly half of students who identify as being LGBTQ+ are considering suicide. I ask you to consider this, that the policy that you consider tonight not only may fall outside of the laws that respect privacy and safety for our students, but may put our students at risk because they may not be in homes where they can be safe.
Time, time, time. And I learned something from a previous board president. Guys, be respectful. I am going to do a point of order, which I learned from a previous board president. Tony Thurman, I appreciate you being here tremendously. But here's the problem. We're here because of people like you. You're in Sacramento proposing things that pervert children.
All right, so that was the, the board president over in Chino Valley Unified School District responding to Tony Thurman, who came to speak at that meeting. Yvonne, I'll have, have you respond to that in just a moment, but also want to hit upon another school district where we've had some very political issues that have taken place. That's over in Temecula Valley. They also have been part of the news headlines over the past few weeks. The board there chose to ban a social studies textbook because it included a reference to Harvey Milk. Now that board has reversed its decision and is adopting the textbooks while also voting to exclude a chapter that highlights civil rights and the gay rights movement. The change of course, according to our friends over at EdSource, came two days after Governor Newsom had threatened to order the book and charged the district $1.6 million plus a fine of $1.5 million. So that was the latest news out of Temecula Valley, which has also carried news headlines. So Yvonne, let me, let me bring you back in because, you know, you and I talked this morning, politics clearly, I mean, this, this is not news to our school administrators, to our viewers. The politics is making its way into our school communities and driving some of what we're seeing. AXA is an organization that focuses on student advocacy. You know, equity is very much what we think about here when we look at how we support students. And there's a lot of work that we're putting in here at AXA. But just your reaction to what you've seen in Chino Valley specifically, since that happened just last week, but also the news out of Temecula Valley?
Yeah, I mean, hearing the, the statistic that the superintendent Thurman cited off there related to LGBTQ plus youth and suicidal ideation is something that should trouble all of us. And it's definitely a continuation of just really disturbing stuff that's taking place in, in school board meetings and in school communities throughout, throughout the state. And honestly, just reflections, things that I've been personally just thinking about over, over the past week and just weeks, prior weeks is, um, just a lot of pride in terms of AXA being a staunch advocate for all youth, including the LGBTQ plus community. And in our One Voice platform, there is a specific language in there that talks about advocating for the rights and supporting our LGBTQ plus students and community. Where we're actively supporting legislation to support the community. We've been very intentional about supporting the LGBTQ state legislative caucus and candidates and have played a, a role in helping get more representation in the state legislature from the LGBTQ plus community. I mean, Naj, you know, we were all together here as staff, just, just very recently celebrating Pride Week, right? And taking it as an opportunity to educate ourselves and to learn and to, and to challenge each other and to come together and celebrate the community. And all those things are really meaningful. I mean, we're, we're engaged in conversations with our members who are up and down the state, loving all our students, supporting students. And, and so that brings me a lot of pride and it's just, it, there's just obviously a lot of work that has to be done, but I'm glad that AXA is on the forefront and advocating, supporting, loving our LGBTQ plus communities. So, and we have another supporter here that's with us today. And so, but yeah, it's just, it's just energizing in terms of recognizing that we have a lot of work to do and just adds fuel on that side. Like, all right, let's roll up our sleeves and let's, let's continue to, to push forward.
Yeah, well, you referred to our guest, so let's go ahead and bring him on right now. Josh Newman is the Senator of California's 29th District, representing portions of Los Angeles, Orange, and San Bernardino County. Senator, it is an honor to have you here on the show today. Your first visit with us here on the AXA Legislative Lunch Break. We just played that video from the board meeting in Chino Valley, which is in your district. And then, of course, we talked about what's happening in Temecula Valley, in Orange. You've been an LGBTQ champion for students. What are some of your thoughts on what you saw happening in Chino Valley and just other things that are happening there in our school communities?
I appreciate it. Thank you for having me. And the, the video we saw was, was alarming. I actually, I couldn't be there, but I sent a member of my staff to testify as well. And he was shouted down. He was cut off as well. And it was, it was kind of a scary moment for, for him. He was actually, you know, kind of chased out and accosted on the way out. And so what, what we're seeing in these school district elections and then the conduct of the boards that have been elected, as we're seeing sort of the, the manifestation of the, the culture war in kind of the least helpful place, and that's in students' lives. And so, you know, to, to build on some of the superintendent statistics, not only do LGTPQ students have a bunch of issues, you know, suicidal issues, but you know, 80% of LGBTQ students have been harassed or feel unsafe. And that is our obligation as parents. That's our obligation as policymakers to make sure that they are fully safe. And it's, it's really unnerving to see this play out. As you mentioned, Chino Valley in my district as well, Placentia or Belinda, to the south of me, Newport Mesa, up in Temecula. And what we're seeing is, is just this kind of injection of the culture war into school board elections, school board conduct in ways that most of us really hadn't considered it. I think it snuck up on a lot of us. That's why I'm very proud to have a bill that AXA is the sponsor. And that comes out of something that happened in Orange Unified at the beginning of the year, where change of control of the board and they summarily fired an otherwise, you know, outstanding superintendent without notice, without real, you know, deliberation or, or accounting for the destabilization impact that would have. And so, you know, I'm also open to kind of the broader conversation about it. You know, how do we elevate school board elections so that they're not the kind of exclusive purview of the hard right? Unfortunately, for those of us with kids in school, we often assume that schools and administrators are doing good work on their behalf. For people without kids, you know, you tend to think, you know, schools are doing what they're supposed to be doing. But for people who are engaged in this, you know, kind of MAGA Fox News conversation, you know, if you look at that audience, that's a really scary prospect to, you know, to look at a full house. I saw there was a guy in the front with a flag. Everybody brought signs. And, and that's a perfect example of politics, you know, sort of drowning out policy. And the policy should be about kind of, you know, safety, being attentive to the needs of all students. You know, this is something I think I'm afraid we're going to see more of in the future, unless all of us get more engaged and we make sure that we vote in school board elections.
Yeah, Senator, if you don't mind, if we just stay on this topic here for just a little bit longer. But I know you and your colleagues are engaged in conversation about these things that are playing out. And number of your colleagues are, are having to respond to these things that are, that are, that are happening in their school communities within their school districts. I'm just curious, what, what, what do you feel is the legislature's role in this?
So it's an interesting question, Yvonne. I mean, the legislature's role is to create guidelines, policies, right? That, that ensure transparency, stability, you know, thoughtful discourse. We can't control who wins elections, right? You know, so it's, you know, majority rule important, you know, for lots of reasons. And so that's what you're seeing. But that should be balanced or at least tempered by policies that take into account privacy, as the superintendent mentioned, but more generally safety, you know, thoughtfulness. And so there's a couple of bills that have, are moving through the legislature. AB 5 from Assembly Member Rick Spur would require school districts to come up with policies so that for LGBTQ students, training for administrators and students. Prior bill, SBA 57 from Senator John Laird did something similar. And it required the superintendent to convene a task force to make recommendations on supportive policies for LGBTQ students. I have my own bill, which is SB 760, which, which would require every school in school district in the state to provide bathrooms, general neutral bathrooms for students who might be non-binary questions, so they can use the facilities every day without fear of stigmatization or outing or harassment. And so, you know, those are the kinds of things that we can and should do. What we as citizens need to do is to fully participate in these down ballot elections. I think I started to mention, you know, I think there's a conversation that has started about prospectively moving those historically down ballot elections up to the top of the ballot so that we hopefully get better participation in school board trustee elections. So you don't see these wild swings or these disconnects between, you know, sort of the general politics of an area and the politics of a school board. I think that's what you're seeing in Chino Valley, unfortunately. I'm also going to introduce legislation next year to pick up on something Senator Dave Minn tried to do last year, which is to move county board election, the dates from the primary into the general. So you get a more representative electorate there as well. And as I mentioned, you know, 494, the bill that we're doing, would, would hopefully just, you know, bring some stability, some transparency to these really important conversations about management and leadership changes that might happen after changing control.
Let me just point out a, a comment from Helio Brazil. He says, you know, "Hard to grasp how disturbing this is. It's beyond politics and it's not good for kids. Hurts to see adults act in public meetings in such a disrespectful way, tearing each other apart." Not what we, not what we teach. So a comment in. Senator, let me, because you made mention of it, let me just move over to Senate Bill 494, which AXA is proud to, to be part of. Two important parts here. I want to make sure that I clarify those for our viewers before we go in depth on it. First, the bill would prevent the use of special or emergency meetings for terminating a district superintendent or assistant superintendent, thus requiring the 72-hour public notice for such a significant decision. Second, school boards would not be able to terminate a superintendent or assistant superintendent within 30 days of the first convening of a school board following a general election. It, it's important to point out these two requirements because they would only apply to situations that are without cause. So from your perspective, what could legislation like this mean in our school communities?
So hopefully what this does is provide, I guess the way I phrase it, lower the temperature. You know, lower, lower the temperature from, from what we clearly saw in that Chino Valley meeting. And we saw something very similar in Orange Unified, where change of control in the school board at the beginning of this year, when the new board took their seats. And at the first meeting, they dismissed the superintendent. And they were taking advantage of, as you mentioned, the, the difference between the termination noticing requirement and the hiring noticing requirement. So all this would do is require the same noticing requirement for a termination without cause so that the public and all the, you know, the various affected stakeholders would have an appropriate opportunity to weigh in, right? To be part of those conversations, which clearly have big implications for districts. And then that 30-day window, I think anybody who's ever been elected to a public board is aware that I don't care how much you think you knew going in. You know, there's a big learning curve and this is especially true for school systems. And so what this would do is, is it would provide 30 days from the first convening so that, you know, ideally, new members would be fully apprised of their role, their responsibilities, you know, their, their public, the public expectation. And then they have every right as a majority to, you know, make decisions that are within the prerogative of majority. But you want that done deliberately. You want that done transparently, you know, with full public input. And, and so that at a minimum, we don't see, you know, this kind of mob-like mentality presenting itself in meetings. And I will say to your point, I mean, it must be really alarming for students to come to a meeting and see adults acting like that. I mean, it, it can't make them all that optimistic about the world they're about to join upon graduation. And it's a shame because, you know, lots of things we need to discuss in education, lots of problems we need to solve in politics, but clearly that's not the way to do it.
Senator, we're about a month out from when the governor signed the budget. And yeah, we were in a very different budget situation this go around than we've been in, in recent years. One, appreciate just your advocacy and helping, you know, fully fund the local control funding formula, advocating against these retroactive cuts to a couple block grants that were being proposed. But just wanted to ask your opinion, were there any, was there anything that played out that surprised you? Yeah, just anything, anything that you want to talk about there that was most meaningful, do you think in terms of investments that were made by the state and, and education, public education?
Yeah, and so as you mentioned, so we went from having historic surpluses in the last two budget years to, to this year, you know, with the market having come significantly to, you know, to a $30 billion shortfall. And I think the legislature is, on the one hand, grateful to the governor for prioritizing LCFF funding, but also maintaining the COLA. And so, you know, that was pretty healthy. COLA increase for this year, I think badly needed, right? When you look at the state of the, kind of the educated workforce. And we can also be proud, I think, of the work that we did. I was, I was glad to work with Senator Laird. He chairs the Budget Subcommittee for Education to, to, you know, hold harmless to the extent possible, the educational system, you know, the Prop 98 funds in, in this budget year. So, you know, next year, be interesting what we see. But to your point, you know, COLA really important, LCFF very important, but also protecting the arts, music, and instructional materials block grant monies, specifically because in, in the surplus years, you know, we made those grants and districts made plans for those funds. And had we revoked those funds, it would have, I think, been really destabilizing, not just for the students who were looking forward to this program, but to the systems, the districts that had, had made plans around them. So, so glad to have done that. I think as we look toward next year, it, it, it may get harder, but we need to place the same emphasis on LCFF funding, but on, on also on fully supporting the workforce. Coming out of the pandemic, we had, you know, really high levels of attrition. It is getting harder and harder to recruit both teachers and administrators. And so we need to make sure, you know, in a state with a thousand school districts, that, that we have the funds and the political support to make sure that we maintain and continue to grow our resources to the extent possible.
Folks, if you want to ask the Senator any questions, go ahead and put those into the chat. And time permitting, we'll get to those. Helio, we see your question in there, so we'll go ahead and address that at the end. Senator, Yvonne brought up revenues. Given that we're seeing some revenue slowing, what should school, school leaders be prepared for? What kind of budget priorities will you be pushing ahead with as we start the new legislative year?
So, you know, I think what administrators have to be prepared for is conversations similar to, and perhaps more imperative than the current year, right? It, you know, it gets harder in a second, sort of a sterile year. We've been, especially in the Senate, really deliberate about responsible budgeting. The state has a, you know, the best set of rainy day resources we've ever had. But the, the size of our budget, the scope of our responsibilities is such that, you know, that, that money can, can go away fairly quickly. You know, in very general terms, looking forward, you know, it's, it's supporting students, families, educators, placing emphasis both on the arts and on STEM education ways that, that we started making, I think, good investments on during the surplus years, ensuring access to appropriate and accurate materials. You mentioned Temecula. You know, instructional materials aren't cheap, and it's really important to make sure that they're both current and representative. And then, you know, making sure, I guess, two other things, that, you know, that, that school is a safe and healthy place for students. And then my own priority, kind of moving forward, you know, over the next couple of years, is to the extent possible, and this is where I think some of the ELAB programs, some of the arts funding already makes a difference, is, is to the extent possible, is aligning the school day with the workday in, in ways that make more sense, not only for students, but for the parents who, who have to get them to and from school, while, while, you know, often maintaining dual incomes. And if we can do that, I, I think we'll make significant progress toward, you know, having a resilient and robust educational system for California students.
Senator, when, when the legislature reconvenes after summer recessed here in mid-August, it, it's, it's a real sprint to that, to that finish line. And a lot of major education-related policies still in play. What, what will be your focus in that last month of session?
My focus will be, you know, shoving my own legislation over the finish line, but also some of these other critical policies. I know I mentioned AB 5. I think you touched on Temecula. You know, there's a bill in progress that is directly relevant. It's AB 1078 from Assembly Member Cory Jackson. And, and that's the bill that would create the, the framework to hold districts accountable if they decide to exercise their prerogatives in the way that the Temecula School District did. We need to ensure that, you know, every district has good and current and representative instructional materials. You know, there should be a significant amount of local control, local decision-making, but it should not be like the opening, right? It should not, you know, again, be politics over the priorities or protection of students. So, you know, that's, that's my approach. And I'm, again, I'm grateful for my colleagues and I'm especially encouraged that both the superintendent, Tony Thurman, but also the governor have gotten directly involved in these conversations. And I think it is, you know, sort of sad, but necessary at this point.
Senator, one final question. Helio's been very involved in our chat today. He is the superintendent over at Keys Union School District. He asked the question first, Senator, thank you for your words. "Are students engaged in such discussions with respect and dignity?" Referring back to what we saw in the video in Chino Valley, the situations that have happened in Temecula Valley, Orange, and such. How can we as adults do the same? I know a broad question, but we figured we, we tossed that one at you. I guess if we're going to teach our students to be respectful, how can we get our adults on board to have these conversations where they're substantive and not screaming matches?
Wow, I mean, if that's not the question of our era, right? I mean, and so, that's a good question. So, you know, I try in, in sort of my conduct as a chair to sort of set that same example, you know, to provide space for both sides, but also to be respectful and, and to try and emphasize the work that we're doing, you know, the essential nature of it. It's, it's not just about politics. It's about something bigger than that. Politics is the pathway, you know, for people to express their feelings. So to the superintendent's question, it's a really good question, right? And, and I think what's, what's especially alarming about the Chino Valley situation is, is, I don't know if your viewers are aware of it, that audience is both energized and informed by a local church, right? And so it says something doubly alarming, right? If, if, if not only we're seeing that kind of conduct in, in a public setting like that, but if it's being driven by a congregation. And so to the superintendent's question, I think we all need to lead by example. I think if students do that, hopefully, you know, adults will take notice. And over time, you know, I hope to replace some of those angry adults and those angry school board members with some of the young people that are making their way into this process. But that really is the question in school. I think civics education is one of the most important things we can emphasize. So that looking forward, that we do have, you know, a cohort of, you know, informed, engaged people that'll participate in thoughtful ways in these public debates. You know, superintendent, I don't, not really sure beyond that what we can do, except in kind of the small ways that I've mentioned around some of the legislation that the legislature is considering.
Senator Josh Newman from District 29, representing portions of Los Angeles, Orange, and San Bernardino County. Senator Newman, it's been an honor to have you here on the show with us. Thank you so much. We look forward to having you back.
I look forward to seeing everybody in Sacramento and thank you for having me today. Yvonne, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Folks, if you'd like what you've seen here on the AXA Legislative Lunch Break, we invite you to subscribe to us or like us on Facebook. If you subscribe to us on YouTube or like us on Facebook, you'll get instant alerts when we're about to come on with live breaking news. And of course, you'll get reminders when we are coming on the air for the regular Wednesday show. Also, if you have great stories happening in your school districts, we invite you. Also, if you have great stories happening in your school districts, we invite you to send in that information so we can amplify the good things happening in your district. Go ahead and send your information, your photos to our edcal editor, Michelle Carl at mcarl@axa.org. Also want to mention AXA's Leadership Summit, Yvonne, coming up here first week of November in Sacramento, one of the premier professional development events in the entire country. Here's a preview. And that is AXA's Leadership Summit in Sacramento this year, coming your way November 2nd through 4th. For registration information, go to AXA.org-professional-learning to learn more about the 2023 Leadership Summit. Yvonne, it's been great having you here on the show. Maybe next time we come on, Edgar will bring photos, maybe he'll bring us a gift. That would be great. I don't know if he's even thought about us.
Naj, I totally thought you were going to say, Yvonne, maybe next time you'll wear a sports coat and a tie. And so I'm glad he didn't go that way, but then I just stepped in it myself. But no, this was great. It was, it's always an honor to be able to engage in dialogue with the Senator and these topics are so timely. But yeah, thanks for having me on. This was fun.
Absolutely. Folks, thank you so much for being with us today on the AXA Legislative Lunch Break. Remember, we are live and interactive Wednesdays here on AXA Facebook and AXA YouTube. Have a great rest of the day and rest of the week, and we'll see you next time.